Brian is unable to be here tonight, so we're gonna go to 5-1 superintendent's report.
Hello, everyone. I'm just gonna talk tonight a little bit about the upcoming school year and some of the latest developments with COVID and what we perceive a situation being as best as we can in September. So I'll start with just a quick summary of the current status both nationally and regionally, regionally being Suffolk County. Nationally, on June 25th, there were 51,000 cases of COVID. That's over 400% more than a month prior. So if you go back, actually, it was about three weeks prior, or about 1,000 cases. So what's primarily responsible for the rise, as almost everyone knows, is the Delta variant. And we're following, we being the United States, following, we're following the trajectory of some European countries who experienced this a couple of weeks or months before us. And currently, about 84% of the new cases in the United States are due to the Delta variant. In Suffolk County, the numbers for July 25th, which were reported today, the test positive rate on July 25th was 3%, and the seven-day average was 2.2%. If you go back one month ago, the test positive rate for June 25th was 4 tenths of 1%, and the seven-day average was 4 tenths of 1%. So basically, the daily count one month out has increased over 700%. And the seven-day count has increased about 550%. So it's pretty clear that the situation is worsening due to the Delta variant. And a lot of the data out there suggests that we have a bifurcated situation in our country where it's become the the COVID disease of the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated. And just today, the state of California came out with some new restrictions or mandates regarding state employees and vaccines. And I expect that you'll have more of those situations arise in the next few weeks. The situation with school for September is fluid. And I say it's fluid because the situation one month from now or six weeks from now could be entirely different than what it is today. There is some discussion that Scott Gottlieb, who is the former director of the, I think, the CDC under the Trump administration, said that he believes that two to three weeks from now, you're gonna see a peak with the Delta variant. And he bases that on what he's seeing in England right now, but who really knows? Again, we really don't know what's gonna happen in September. But right now, the thinking, the tentative thinking that I have shared with the administrators and that I'll share tonight is that in line with the CDC guidance and the latest information out there, it's likely that we will mandate masks in the elementary school and that we will mandate masks for employees and students with the primary consideration being that vaccines are not available for students 11, for children 11 and under. It's only 12 and up. Now, there's tentative, I guess, there's a, there's tentative thinking out there that the 5 to 11 age group will receive, Pfizer and Moderna will likely receive emergency use authorization in September slash October, depending on how quick that review process goes. But our thinking at this point, again, tentative, is that if the vaccine is not available to students 11 and under, the prudent thing to do is to require mask wearing when school opens. The middle school, high school is more complicated because the vaccine is available for students or persons 12 and up. And what that does at the middle school, high schools, it creates a bit of a dilemma in that the sixth grade, probably 60 or 70% of them will not be 12 years of age in September when we open. And what that means is that we're, we potentially, if we didn't mandate masks because students 12 and older, persons 12 and older are eligible for the vaccine. Let's just say we made the decision to not mandate masks, then those 50 or 60 students in the sixth grade would be increasing the likelihood that they could be exposed to the virus. So again, my recommendation at this point, and obviously that can change, is that absent any further developments with regard to vaccine eligibility, it's likely that the high school will be masked and the middle school as well until sometime soon after the emergency use authorization comes, the person's age 5 to 11. Which again, I anticipate, when I say I anticipate, I'm just basing it on what I read sometime in late September, early October. Any questions about anything that I just covered?
I do, thank you for that. As it has been since it started, things can change. I understand that the state employees have been mandated that they must be vaccinated by a certain date. Correct?
The state, when I refer to the state, I think it was the state of California, Newsom, the governor Newsom announced that today. I know that Mayor de Blasio has made some similar announcements with regard to municipal employees in the city. I'm not aware of any state mandate as of yet, except as it relates to, I think, not even sure if it's healthcare. I think that was the city.
Okay. So that's, that's a question mark now whether state employees will be required to.
Yeah. What you're seeing now is you're seeing private entities, whether it's universities or corporations, mandate it, and the courts have weighed in thus far that that's permissible. And in fact, it was challenged in the state of Indianapolis last week. And the, the courts ruled that, he was University of Indiana, was permitted to mandate it. But I suspect that we're gonna see more challenges moving forward. And the other development that's, that's, that's probably going, this is separate from your question, is you're going to see some more hard-line tactics with regard to vaccines. Because what's happened thus far is the rate of vaccination has decreased pretty significantly. And whether it's within the United States or in Europe, and what's happening is governments are starting to become more heavy-handed in trying to get more people vaccinated. So you're seeing that in France right now. And you're starting to see it in the United States.
I think what you're saying really makes sense to what you can see at this point, but while we're waiting and seeing, you're gonna err on the conservative side.
So just to clarify, so the elementary, you, you suggested that the one in mass, but not middle and high school or both?
Will be both unless, unless the vaccine becomes available to students 5 to 11 before September. So let's play it out a little bit. Let's say authorization comes so that the vaccine can be, vaccine is, can be dispersed to students 11 and, 11 to 5, 5 to 11. I would anticipate that the district will allow a certain amount of time, whether it's four to six weeks, for people to access that vaccine. And then thereafter, depending on conditions on the ground, we could perhaps do away with the mask mandate at that time. Because if we did not do that, then the students in sixth grade who travel throughout the building who are not eligible for the vaccine would be at increased risk.
So Mr. Nichols, even though the sixth graders aren't sharing classes with the high school students, just because, it's because they're sharing hallways and bathrooms and other, other parts of the building, then the recommendation would be to.
So I appreciate all the thoughtfulness and consideration. Obviously, it's a fluid situation. Things can change a lot between now and when the school year starts, but it seems like you're approaching it the same way you have from the beginning, just to follow the guidance from our public health officials. Appreciate it.
You have other questions? No? You have a question, Mr. Nichols?
That's it for my superintendent's report.
Okay. Principal's report. Ms. Carreras, would you like to start?
Yeah. So we finished our algebra summer school last week, which was a success. We've got 14 students participating, and I feel like those students will be ahead of the first coming in in September for their math programming. We've been busy doing our hiring like we always do, as well as getting things ordered and ready and reviewing the facilities in a fluid situation on how we're going to accommodate our students in very different segments.
Sandy, may I make a recommendation, perhaps, if you have a staff member speaking? If they go to the podium, then they'll be on camera and want even more likely to be heard on video. That's what we, that's what they used to do, and then they could be seen that way versus just always.
On the next one.
No, 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 you're good. No. It wasn't a request. And now I looked at the, the video from the last meeting, and it's like a voice from here and there. It's hard to hear sometimes, so. And then my best, yeah, but yes.
Good evening, everyone. Just as Ms. Carreras said, preparing, here at Pearson, we're in the midst of preparing for reopenings. It was an exciting time, busy time, some, some hiring, classroom preparations. And you know, while we know things will, are we anticipating being fluid for the next few weeks with regards to guidance that may come from the state, where, you know, excited with returning to activities looking more like normal with obvious safety precautions and, you know, staying smart, staying safe. Our summer program has been a great success. We've welcomed, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, about 50 kids to our summer academy. This is students that are entering, it's two through five, and they've been working on some of the, some of the basics, the important skills of math and reading. Teachers have done a great job. And of course, as always, they've mixed it a lot of fun. And thanks to Dr. Mears and Mr. Mills, so we also have a group of students that have the extended school year program on their IPs. So all, all things are going really well.
Dr. Mears, give a report now?
No, we just did the principal's.
Okay, that's it. Okay, got it. The second agenda. Hey, can I have a motion to approve item 7.1 through 7.20? Second?
Second.
Discussion. I do, Jen, I have a quick question for you. All the approval and the awards of bids and everything, is this for that secular learning center? Is this for other buildings? It's a combination?
The, the award of the bids for the festival and for the, if you see it, it's for.
Okay, great. Any other further discussion? Okay, Mary, why don't I have a vote?
That's unanimous.
Okay, can I have a motion for action 8.1, please?
So, second? Second.
Discussion. Mr. Nichols, you wanna give us a little update on the establishment of position?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Fisher, Ms. Shamy, because her and I discussed this.
So the claims auditor is a required position in the school district, and it's usually appointed each year at the reopening. Our claims auditor has been doing this job now for us for 26 years, and it has changed over time. She originally did the position as an employee, and then when she retired, she became an independent contractor. So she did it for years, was an independent contractor. Last year, the IRS came in and they did a worker classification audit. So they looked at a whole group of independent contractors that we hire for various positions, accountants and physical therapists. And, you know, there's a, there's a whole slew of positions that they reviewed. And they came up with a list after they interviewed us, after they looked at their contracts, after they got a list of what their duties were, they told us that we had to take some of these positions and now make them employees. Or we could also, or we could hire firms to do the same work. So at that point, we had the choice of either making the claims or a deposition, hiring her as an employee, or going out and listing bids for a firm. And just out of experience, I just know that to have a firm do the role, it would be a significantly, significantly higher expense for us. So I checked with civil service, and civil service did tell us that the position was that. So, which means that we didn't have to work off of a competitive list or do that process at all. They basically said that based on her experience and the years of service that she had doing it, that she qualified to get appointed. So that's why it changed this year, and now she will be considered an employee. And it would just be for a limited amount of hours, basically for the same pay rate that she was paid as an independent contractor. So we were kind of backed against the wall because this is, this was the IRS telling us to do that. This wasn't something that we really, you know, wanted to on our own.
So basically, it's a housekeeping issue after their friends.
Yes.
Yep. And this is the same person that we've had for, I believe.
26 years. She's been doing position, and she does a great job, and all, none of her auditors have ever, you know, written her up on anything that she does. So we're happy to have her.
Right. So anybody else have any other questions about that? No? Okay, Mary, why don't I have a vote, please?
Okay.
Okay, so we've established position, and now we're gonna take a motion to approve the claims auditions. I have a motion, please.
Some.
Second. Discussion. Okay. I might open the mirror. Oh, there you go.
Okay. That's unanimous.
Okay, so let's go to. Oh, no. I just heard discussion. Does anybody have any energy for discussion? Well, I have a request that at the next board meeting, we have a public conversation about what committees we wanna have for the coming year. There were a couple of new ones we did last year. Some of them were kind of circumstantial in nature, so. And it's this way that probably we'll have an opportunity to also get a second, but and then from there, I would hope very quickly that we put out the word to the community, see who would wanna volunteer, and we can solidify the committee so we can get started, you know, maybe by, you know, before the end of August, early September with our community work. I agree. Mary, could you do us a favor and just resend that list to everybody in the email of what the committees were from last year so the board can review it, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I wanna bring up, I think that we also need to have Mary send out a couple of dates for us because we have to get our board goals going and our district goals. So I think it's important that we try to get at least two dates, if possible, back to back so we can kind of get it up and running and done and not have it be part of a board meeting. Possibly even get it done in one meeting, which would be great, but I think we really need to set aside a date for that. So maybe Mary could send us out like five or six dates in the next, for August, so we can get them up and running before the school district. Is there a agreement to that?
Yes.
I know, it's my favorite time of the year, guys.
Yeah, we have to have the calls nailed down before the school year starts.
Yes. Yes, it's actually a regulation. We really do have to get that done. So if, Mary, if you could just send out, you know, five dates, six dates, and then we'll get the response. Guys, try to be flexible too, because I know it's really hard for Mary. She gets bored for this day, but can we just get it done, please?
So can I offer a suggestion? Maybe start on August night?
Yeah.
You're already gonna meet?
Well, I just don't, I don't wanna rush it to show like we've done in years past either. That's my only concern. I'd rather spend just one night and do it properly and get it done.
Okay.
But.
And maybe get both of those done.
Yeah, and one night, so we don't have to bring out this episode.
Okay.
Or you. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I'm gonna open up to public input number two. Again, it's three minutes. The podium is behind me. Please refrain from speaking to any individual, but to the board, and we'll do our best to answer the question.
And please state your first and last name.
Yes. Yeah.
You go first. I'll go first.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, the party. That's what we need, right? Just me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I have a question first, and the question is, I just wanna be very clear, and I wanted to ask this so that I could get an answer. Is it fair to say that the SAG-ARPA Union Free School District Board and Superintendent supports full district-wide masking until vaccinations can be given to all students by now? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Um, I think the answer to it is a little bit more nuanced. Because I preface everything by saying that the situation may change before we start the school.
Okay.
But assuming that conditions don't change.
Yeah.
One of the primary considerations is eligibility for the vaccine.
Right.
So once everybody, assuming there are no other changes, if everybody in the school system is eligible for the vaccine.
Yeah.
Then the masking, the way we look at the masking situation changes.
Okay, so then, let's say the vaccine becomes available for students 5 and up. Would the official stance of the SAG-ARPA Union Free School District Board and Superintendent then be, you would require all vaccinations for everyone to attend school, assuming New York State does not lay out that type of a mandate? And it's left to schools. I wanna understand where.
I don't think, so you asked me whether or not the school would mandate vaccines?
Correct.
I don't think it's within our purview at this point to legally do that.
Okay, so here's my question. Several questions, right? So, New York State, let's just say for argument's sake, they don't mandate vaccines, okay? And let's say we get closer to September and numbers are the same low out here, okay? They're not gonna mandate the vaccine. But I'm hearing that you're masking everybody, right? Because the vaccine is not yet available to everybody.
That's the logic that I just laid out, given the current conditions.
So if the vaccine is not made available to 5 to 12, let's say the whole year passes, and that is not made available.
Right.
Where will our district be headed? Will we be masking everyone for the whole year? Will we be distinguishing between vaccinated and unvaccinated? How will the district then handle that shift if vaccinations are not mandated in New York State? And if, as you described, you move forward as a board and a district and a community, as you described, is there not a discrepancy that then becomes apparent when we start comparing vaccinated, unvaccinated as a community, as a school, but that's not what's being mandated from the state? Doesn't that then create a very poor situation for all the students, for the parents, for the teachers?
You're saying an awful lot in.
So, yeah.
I'm concerned.
Yeah.
So I think first, I, I wouldn't equate masking with with vaccines or mandating vaccines. What I said earlier tonight was that the eligibility for the vaccine.
Yeah.
Once that's made available, then I think the district, within a reasonable amount of time, four to six weeks.
Okay.
Whatever it is, can become less stringent with regard to masks because then everybody has the personal choice to access the vaccine.
Okay, so then, my goodness. So I, I think I'm hearing then is there will still be personal choice in SAG-ARPA Union Free School District as a parent for your own child in reference to that type of thing, if New York State does not mandate?
As it relates to vaccines, yes.
And so if, once we get there, then we will be at a space where some people are vaccinated and some people aren't. And how are we going to handle the masking scenario?
I think my tentative thinking, and I'm not speaking for the board at this point, because I'm just making the reports.
Yeah.
Again, there are a lot of variables in terms of conditions on the ground.
Yes.
But once the vaccine is available to people, you know, and when I say people, five and up, basically our school population, or maybe the learning centers are a little different. Once.
Yeah, the learning.
Right.
Once the vaccine's available and we provide a reasonable amount of time for people to, to get vaccinated, which is four to six weeks, four to eight weeks, then I think the school's role in requiring masks is greatly relaxed.
Okay.
Because I don't think that it's our responsibility at that point, as much it is, as much as it is right now because the vaccine's not available.
I have so much more to say, but I have three minutes, and I've taken much more than that, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jessica, I'm gonna ask a nuanced question just in the tail end of that. So if by chance the vaccines were now available for nine and up, let's say. Right? Then we could have a middle and high school that would require them.
Correct.
Okay. If, if the climate stays the way it is.
Right.
It's all based on that.
CDC regulations.
Right, I mean, you know, and I would go through the room and try something.
Thank you, Sandy, for saying that, because as we know, the one thing we want is things change so quickly.
In a minute, it does, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I wanna just reiterate that last one, I think Sandy and Mr. Nichols were making is that, you know, we're, we're sitting here and trying to predict something that might happen in a few months. And we don't know what that is.
We don't know what's gonna happen next week.
Sure. No, and I think it's helpful that you're given what your current thinking is, and you're obviously following what the guidance is from the public health officials. But we should all be mindful of, you know, none of us have a crystal ball as to what.
Just wanna clarify, because it wasn't good for me. So for middle and high school, because the vaccine is available, you're not gonna.
Once, once, no, no, once the vaccine is available to everybody in the middle school, high school, right now.
If the sixth grade won't be, then we're gonna have, so high school, they're not gonna have?
No, they're a mixed building. So we have high school students interacting, so it'll be the whole.
And it would be some seventh graders too, right? There would be some seventh graders up until December 1st.
Yeah, potentially.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm listening. Michael Hayes. I'm gonna share an email I shared, sent to Jeff, and this is about Nash Park and the facilities. And then I have just a couple of questions that I'll pose, and you guys can answer or just take them home and think about it, come back to it at some point. On May 19th, I sent an email. And the text of that email is, "Good morning, Jeff. I wanna express the opinion of my wife and I that the school should continue with the relationship to use the athletic fields at Nash Park." I understand the desire, the desire of the school to have facilities on par with the district's competitors, but those schools have the grounds and have made the investments in their own facilities. You all kinda know that. It's not reasonable to expect 100% of the cost to be spared by the park and the facilities to those standards solely on a not far. I believe taking the tack to break, or Yakov, I have to be the treasurer of break, but Yakov did with the village is that we secure the multi-decade lease. I'm gonna start to summarize this reading. I didn't bring my glasses. But, yeah, we secure the multi-decade lease and continually over since, you know, late 80s, early 90s, continue to make capital investments from building our own building on leased property, building docks, to recently doing a dock renovation, expanding our capabilities and docks. And we continue to look at more improvements to our buildings and facilities, even maybe doing waterfront cranes and stuff to be able to move boats because we're getting a lot of investment. My point is, is that I do believe that, you know, the current situation that has been unfolding year in, year out, kind of a five-year rolling cycle has prohibited the school and the park fully capitalize on these things and making a longer-term commitment with the park. I would strongly support on, on both on the school side and also try and help facilitate the park's position on that. I have a good relationship with the park.
I have a good relationship with the park. It's been many, many years that I've worked with them in different ways. I do believe they earnestly would like to come to the solution, and I think it's a matter of working out some of the details from what I wanna ask. Long term, I think from the kid's standpoint, to be moving them around in different locations, year in and year out, with being constrained by what fields are available, given whether you're leveraging other schools or county park, is not a long-term solution to Sec Harbor. I mean, the kids should play in sports in Sec Harbor. And so, you know, going forward, you know, I hope that we can continue those conversations with the park, and we'll want a resolution. Certainly, the school, you know, being able to make a long-term investment, I understand some of the accounting issues of capital, capital contribution, capital investment versus operating investment, the capital investment being a certain lease length. I get all that. Those are all details that can, I think, can be worked out, and really encourage and push everybody here and there to resolve this before the school year, or at least, at least get a year under your belt so you keep getting solutions. Don't make these kids get on buses and drag them around. If you guys have real options, is what you're considering, because I keep hearing about, we have options? You wanna tell us, because this black hole isn't helping anybody feel good about what's going on. So I encourage you to communicate that, what those scenarios might be. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'll respond to that, so because I am on the negotiating committee, working with the park along with Alex, Jeff, and Brian. And it is our hope to be able to work together cooperatively and provide the best scenario for our kids at the park. Our conversations are ongoing. They have not stopped, and we're all in rooms together trying to work out details. So that's the best I can give at this point, but it's our, our hope to keep our kids here also. But if it doesn't work out, we do have good solutions, and if we need to come to those, we'll absolutely bring them to the public and have a discussion about it. So we're totally open, but right now, in the middle of negotiations, we, you know, that's about all we can say, as you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, you know. Thank you for your understanding.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? No, okay. I just turned off my computer. So can I have a motion to convene into executive session? Discuss contractual. Negotiations.
Contracts.
Contracts.
And appointment.
A lot. So may I have a motion to go into executive session?
So, second.
I'm not up, Mary, so I'm gonna give you a yes. I just want to let you know right now that we will not be coming out of the executive session, and there will be, when we come out, we'll close the meeting, there'll be no votes.
Mary, I'm a yes too.
Yeah.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.